It's six, I mean, five thirty-five. We can now start the study session on the zoo and everything that's been developing as of recently.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, Council. We very much appreciate your time tonight to review with you some of the strategies that we've been working on since last December, early January. With me tonight is our President, CEO, Rue Kojanski, and our Board Chair, Jeff Beach. And behind me also, just to make a few introductions, are members of the Erie Event Team. We have the two Board members, Gwen White and Tim Riley, the Solicitor, Jim Walzak, and Gus Pine and his staff are here in case there's any questions that you would like to hear from them, since the proposal that we're going to talk about obviously involves both the zoo and Erie Events. Just to start with, and I'll be brief because you really want to hear from Rue, she's going to give you all of the fine details, of where we're at with the zoo, what some of our issues are financially, operationally, capital-wise, as well as measures that we need to take in order to preserve this very treasured, well-loved community asset. And we're having these conversations, either ironically or fortuitously, celebrating 100 years of the zoo's existence this year. The zoo has been in this community for 100 years. So I think that it is just a prime opportunity to figure out how we're going to preserve, protect, and enhance this asset going into the next 100 years. So with that, again, we appreciate your time. Obviously, the plans that we're going to talk about require the city's okay, both Council and the administration. I'm very happy that the mayor has joined us tonight with Chris Groner. They have been apprised of some of these details as well, so we're delighted to have the opportunity to share that with Council tonight. So with that, I will turn it over to Rue, and there is a PowerPoint presentation, so you can follow along with her edification of stuff.
Good evening, everyone. As Jane mentioned, my name is Rue Kojanski, President and CEO of the zoo. I'm very thrilled to be here tonight to talk to you all about the exciting things that are happening, of course, some of the challenges, of course, that you know that we're facing, and an opportunity for us here to really launch ourselves into the next 100 years. As Jane mentioned, the zoo is a vital asset to our region, generating a substantial economic impact and providing a gateway for hundreds of thousands of guests to experience the wonders of wildlife and education. There we go. So to talk about our impact, annually, the zoo has a $21.2 million economic impact. This represents the zoo's role in driving local tourism, supporting local businesses, and fostering community engagement. We serve nearly 300,000 guests, fostering an appreciation of the natural world. We have welcomed, year-to-date, 13,000 schoolchildren, instilling in them a sense of responsibility towards our planet's future. This does not include our summer camp programs, which offers multiple classes throughout multiple weeks of the summer for additional children. Additionally, so far this year, we have welcomed 12,800 underserved members of our community through our gates, through our free admission programs on Sunday afternoons, further demonstrating our dedication to inclusivity and accessibility and our commitment to ensuring that everyone can experience the magic of wildlife. In addition to that, not represented on the screen, we have raised $16,000 for global conservation efforts, and we engage in statewide and regional conservation initiatives, demonstrating our commitment to protecting global and local ecosystems. So our impact over the last five years: $100 million in economic impact, 1.3 million in state and local taxes, and then 226,000 in amusement tax. So if we take a minute to talk about the timeline, if we focus from COVID to present day, we all know that the world changed in 2020 when COVID hit. For us, we suffered another blow in 2021 when we lost AZA accreditation. In the fall and winter of 2021, we immediately rolled in AZA's pathway towards membership program, and this program is designed to assist zoos in preparing for the rigorous accreditation process. So we've talked a lot over the last several years about accreditation. I just wanted to take a high-level look at what accreditation is. So what is AZA accreditation? First of all, AZA stands for the Association of Zoos and Aquariums. AZA is the leading zoo accrediting body. The accreditation process is based upon rigorous scientifically-based standards and promotes exceptional facilities and practices. Accreditation ensures that zoos operate at the highest level, and currently only 237 of the 2,800 licensed USDA animal exhibitors are accredited, representing the top 9% of zoos in the country. We were part of that top 9% for roughly 35 years. So why is accreditation important? Accreditation demonstrates a commitment to excellence in animal care, safety, education, conservation, and visitor engagement. It ensures excellent facilities for animals. It advocates through a collective voice, emphasizing the importance of zoos and animal conservation. It accesses a global network of expertise, fosters staff and community pride, eases animal exchanges between zoos, helps attract and retain qualified staff, and strengthens political action and advocacy at the federal level. So how did we lose accreditation after holding it for 35 years? We operate on a shoestring budget. What happened was, our departments are understaffed, our pay structure is not competitive, the pay structure was below living wage, insufficient preventative maintenance was occurring, significant deferred maintenance, little evidence of professional development, and then our veterinary facilities. And with our veterinary facilities, we always upheld excellent animal care, but our veterinary facilities have shared spaces. And so to be AZA accredited, the veterinary facilities need to be standalone and not shared spaces. And it's important to note here that AZA standards are consistently evolving and improving over time. So what are our current needs? So currently, we have operational and capital needs. Operationally, we need to increase our wages. We need to do this to align with AZA's Wage Analysis Survey, and this survey is the most complete and accurate and up-to-date compensation and benefits data survey in the industry. We also need to increase our staffing. We need to add much-needed positions, and we'll get into a few of those here a little later on.
I know I just got here, but increased wages? How much? What are you talking? Dimes, nickels, dollars, quarters?
We're talking dollars.
Dollars.
Yeah, and Jeff will be getting into that here in the next slide or so. So, increase staffing and improve our ability to attract and retain staff. One thing we've noticed is that we sit in Erie, Pennsylvania. We have the Cleveland, Pittsburgh, and Buffalo zoos surrounding us, all about two hours away, which are much larger zoos that have better wages. So we need to be able to improve wages to attract and retain staff. And this means a competitive livable wage. A story to share very quickly here is that one of our keepers moved on to a position at the Cleveland Zoo. And I will never forget, when I asked her how things were going, how life was treating her, she said that she was so excited to stand at a gas pump and kind of stare off into the distance and not have to pay attention to every penny that was running on the pump. So we want our staff to not feel like they need to pinch pennies. We have deferred maintenance that we need to address, and we want to make sure that as we're working to align, continue to align with AZA standards, that we are positioning the zoo to not only meet those standards but exceed them. I've said it before, and I'll say it again, the last thing we want to do is race to regain accreditation, only to lose it five years later. We want to make sure that what we are doing is we are positioning ourselves to not only meet but exceed the standards for years to come. And then, of course, the goal is to regain accreditation. So if we talk about our capital needs, front and foremost is a veterinary center. This center would be a state-of-the-art facility, complete with modern equipment and high-level imaging. This is needed to regain accreditation. We also want to enhance our IT and security, renovate and modernize exhibits, enhance guest amenities, and then a future goal for us is to expand the zoo footprint. So those are our needs. Now we move into what the challenges are. And I think I'll hand it over to Jeff.
Yes, so again, Jeff Beach, Chair of the Board. My day job, I'm a CPA, so I'll try not to bore you too much with figures, but we're going to go into that a little bit. But first of all, I mean, this is so consequential for us. This is not only about accreditation, it is about the zoo continuing to function as a viable entity. It really is. And I'll explain to some of you why that's happening. But again, thanks again, we appreciate you being here. And a lot of the, all the reasons that Rue listed for losing accreditation, those were actually quoted in the accreditation report. So none of that is made up or stuff we dreamt up. Those are facts that came, you know, right out of the report. And it really was hard to hear from accreditation team from outside our area that we were not providing a living wage to most of our employees. And so, you know, it's been a lot of soul-searching since that meeting, and a lot of good work has been done. You know, basically, as Rue said, you know, zoos do not really survive on admissions, membership, or fundraising events. Most zoos get, and the graph shows, most zoos get a significant amount of their support from local governments. It's either a share of the sales tax, or it's a share of the real estate tax. And as you know, we really don't get any of that, and that's not anybody's fault in this room, but it's just the facts we're dealing with. The only local support we get, we get, we're in EGRA's annual stipend that we get. The state also has a line item in their budget for the PA zoos. So our share of the EGRA each year works out to be about $165,000. Our share of the state money works out to be $80,000. So that's about 245,000. That represents about 5%, or in that year, 4% of our annual cash spend. So it's nowhere near where we needed to be. And that, again, has caused us to live, you know, we take a dollar in, we spend a dollar, and that's all we can do. You know, Rue's going to share with you in a few minutes, there's been a lot of great things that have gone on at the zoo in the last couple of years. And so some people may say, hey, you guys are doing fine, you know? You got a new otter exhibit, some new walkways, you've added some new attractions, ZooBuu, we've added new features every year. The zoo does look better than it has looked in quite a few years, but it's coming at a cost that we can't sustain. If you look at our internal financials that we go over every board meeting, we always add back depreciation, and the reason is, we can't fund $1 of depreciation. So if we didn't add that back, the bottom line would look pretty awful for us and hard to look at each month. So basically, we're not setting aside, we're unable to set aside a dollar for replacing equipment, replacing exhibits. Every time we need to do that, we have to go out and get a grant or raise contributions from the public or from the state. Ironically, during COVID, the various COVID programs, we had the paycheck protection, there was two paycheck protection loans, and the employee retention credit saved us, along with the community really stepping up and realizing we still had to operate the zoo and take care of the animals even though we could not have visitors at the zoo. You know, our membership and our admission numbers really, on an inflation-adjusted basis, really haven't come back from the pre-COVID levels. I mean, we're getting there, but this is a national trend that's really affecting most zoos, so we're not alone with that. The COVID monies came to about $1.1 million, and we basically have been using that money to fund these shortfalls. So since COVID, we've been spending, we've been losing in excess of $200,000 a year to move forward on our staff's wages, move forward on our staff development. We've had added a few positions, and we have adjusted some of the deferred maintenance items that we needed to adjust. But you can see, 1.1 divided by 200,000, that's about five years, and we're in year four. So we're rapidly running out of that excess money. And I frankly don't know what we're going to do if we're not allowed to go with Erie Events to solve that. This summer, we did a comprehensive review that Rue mentioned of our staffing salaries and wages with the AZA report that compared zoos our size in our region. We had one person on the zoo staff that exceeded the median wage. Everybody else was under that. We looked at that, we figured it's going to be about 500,000 a year, and that's all in. So that includes payroll taxes and other retirement benefits that are tied into payroll dollars to get us to that living wage, that median wage for our staff. The other thing we looked at was the staffing needs. It was cited in the AZA report where we lost accreditation, that we have too many people doing multiple jobs, especially our animal care staff. You know, our curator of the animal care is supposed to focus on that and not be focused on nitty-gritty animal care activities. And so, you know, we looked at, we need to add about 12 positions. Again, over time, not immediately, but with benefits and everything, that could become about $600,000. So you can see, it's a big task for us. We're not going to be able to do it alone. And if we can't do it, you know, the zoo's going to fall back.
That's still not particularly high of a number. That's only 50,000 for a full-time position?
Yeah.
And that's benefits and everything?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, some of them are entry-level positions. That's a good point, Chuck. The, again, if we're not able to do this, we're going to see it in, you know, membership's going to decline, admission's going to decline, and it's going to be a bad spiral for us. So, you know, our goal is, you know, we've always talked about on the board, we want to be the best zoo we can be in a community our size. You know, we want to be like the Warner Erie Insurance Arena, you know, the ballpark where people will say, wow, what an asset set that Erie has for a community its size. And that's what we're hoping to do here. So thank you.
Thank you. To Jeff's point, we have extensive expertise at the zoo, and so we can do a lot with a little, and we've done that for many, many years. That's what I'd like to focus on next year. So while we are struggling, while we are dipping into sort of our rainy day fund, it has always been very important to us to dress for the position we want. We held accreditation for over 35 years, and so even though we are not accredited now, we do our absolute best to follow all of the AZA standards to the best of our ability and really create a unique and memorable guest experience. The zoo is rooted in conservation and education, and we express that by encouraging meaningful action, not only among ourselves as staff, but also the guests that walk through our gates. So keeping that in mind, that we continue to strive to be the best possible zoo we can be, I wanted to talk a little bit about accomplishments. And a picture is always, you know, worth a thousand words, so I thought we'd go through this in picture form. So, right off the bat, we secured the commitment of the state for a $2 million commitment to support the zoo as we work our way back to accreditation. We have received the opportunity to apply for the third round of the $2 million, so we are at 1.5 million. We focused that money on capital improvements, deferred maintenance, and also some IT needs.
And security. We don't even have a public defender.
And security, yes, absolutely. Something else that we are extremely proud of is that during this process and during this time, we underwent our very first facilitated strategic plan. And we were very deliberate in how we and who we chose to facilitate the plan for us, and we chose Canopy Strategic Partners. Canopy is the leading strategic planning firm for zoos and aquariums across the US. They are also very rooted in AZA standards, which further aligns us with which further aligns us with regaining accreditation. Some other accomplishments. We have made strides, great strides, in addressing some of our deferred maintenance issues. These pictures represent a new boardwalk up by our rhino exhibit. It also refer, you could see our new wooden bridge going across to our children's zoo area. And then currently, I am very excited about that other picture there that you can't really see too well, but that is actually tree work that we are doing to remove trees so that we can install a new perimeter fence between the zoo and the golf course. That perimeter fence has been the same fence that has been there since the 60s. And so we are very, very proud and excited that we're actually able to undertake this now and improve that perimeter fence. Next up is probably our most recent pride and joy. This is our brand-new, state-of-the-art otter exhibit. When we talk about AZA standards, AZA standards are continuously evolving, continuously improving. The otter exhibit, as, as I'm sure many of you know, the otters are one of our most popular animals. And our exhibit was built in the 80s. Back in the 80s, to go a little nerdy with you here, back in the 80s, research showed that otters liked water and liked land, but they liked water more. So exhibits were designed to have more water than land. Over time, researchers have seen that while otters like water, they prefer land. So now, AZA space requirements indicate that an otter exhibit needs to have a three-to-one land-to-water ratio. So we have this beautiful new exhibit with the appropriate recommendations, and you can see that it's a hit with our guests. Also, we modernize our grounds. And for anyone who might remember, this area, this used to be the giraffe exhibit. And so there is the barn that has been beautifully renovated into our primate habitat. And you'll see the area where there's a patio, that was the giraffe exhibit. So again, when giraffes came back in the 60s, that space was adequate for giraffe. But if we want to bring giraffe back, which we do, giraffes require much more space now than they did then. And there are many, many, many more requirements to house giraffe now than there were back in the 60s. But this area here is our, our new primate habitat. And you can see that space that used to be the giraffe yard is this beautiful patio. And we're able to rent the patio out, and it's a bit of a revenue driver for us. And then, as Jeff mentioned, accomplishment here is that we were able to increase wages and provide more professional development opportunities for our staff. Jeff pointed out that these pictures are a little female-heavy, but shout out to all the, all the women in the group. So we have very passionate and dedicated staff, and that staff deserves to be paid a competitive wage. And they deserve development opportunities to increase their knowledge and increase their skill set. So passion and determination and skill are a very mighty combination. And then, last but not least, we have new additions. So to that, to the primate habitat, we have our colobus monkeys, which are also known as the grumpy monkeys. You can tell by their face there. The cute little guys on the left are spot-nosed gwinens. And then the interesting ones on the bottom there are called Allen Swamp monkeys. The, these guys together, these species together, create a very engaging and enriching habit, enriching habitat. The guests love to watch these guys, and these guys love to interact. I will tell you that the little spot-nosed gwinens are the troublemakers of the bunch. And then you can see, we are so proud of our Canada Lynx kittens. Their names, we have two females there, their names are Jade and Willow. And if we talk about AZA and we talk about conservation efforts, AZA, for several species, has something called a species survival plan. And what that is, is a managed breeding program based on very healthy genetics. So that's kind of it at a very high level. Very happy to say that the pair that we have, Hunter and Roxy, were recommended to breed by AZA. They are both ranked very high genetically. And so these little two are ranked very high genetically also. And will eventually move on to other zoos where they can continue the Canada Lynx population. So those are just some of the accomplishments we've had. There are many more, but just wanted to touch on those. But I wanted to shift into why we are very excited to potentially partner with Erie Events. And that goes, the, I think the, the core of the reason is because they have extensive expertise. And they have expertise in multiple areas. They have expertise in developing and supporting exceptional facilities, including a major ice venue. We have the Flo Fabrizio Ice Center. They have extensive expertise in elevating struggling city assets. I think the Warner Theater is a great example of just the care and attention that is put into such a beloved community asset. Also, Erie Events has expertise in driving local tourism through innovative processes. They've developed world-class facilities that tourists flock to. And also, they have extensive expertise in leveraging substantial financial resources to improve facilities. Their reputation provides an increased confidence. We believe that their expertise would provide an increased confidence to our donor base, showing the, the strides that we are making to secure sustainability and then to modernize and grow. I think with that, I'll hand it over to Jane for conclusion.
Obviously, we're open for questions, but just a couple of points that I want to highlight. In all of the AZA's critique of our zoo, even though we lost accreditation, there was never any criticism of animal care. They were quite impressed with our orangutans, the way, I mean, there was no criticism of how we care for animals, which is very important, and which is why the AZA, one of the main reasons that they're continuing to work for us, with us, because they want us to get re-accredited. We have painstakingly created a new vision and did it very methodically. We have new leadership. We have a strategic plan that you heard was facilitated by the best zoo consultants in the country. We're taking very seriously this creation of a blueprint into the future because we've been winging it for so long and living hand-to-mouth, and it's not working. These things cost money. We've been fairly successful the past couple of years getting resources from the state. We've been very aggressive about trying to get state dollars. The $2 million that Rue mentioned was in $500,000 allotments over four years for some fundamental things like public safety. We don't even have a public address system. You know, we didn't even have Wi-Fi that works throughout the property. Not to mention, we could enhance our customer experience if, like at other zoos, you go in, you get a handheld. Nobody wants to stand and read a sign anymore. You walk through a zoo with an interactive, whatever it's called. App. Those are the types of things that we need to do at our zoo to get visitorship back, but also to lure in new visitors. One of the issues and why it would make sense to partner with Erie Events, even though we've been successful accessing some state resources, for example, the veterinary center that is a must, probably has a price tag of at least $10 million. We've received three from the state. I'm confident that we could probably leverage some more, but we on our own can't meet the match requirements for, you know, a RACP capital investment. And even though the state, you know, has given us $500,000 allotments to the tune of $2 million over four years, that gravy train's going to end too. I mean, we had to lob it very hard for that, and it's not just, you know, an open door forever. We recognize the city does not have the financial wherewithal to support us, nor do any of the other municipalities in Erie County. And that situation isn't going to change. So as we've, you know, taking some painstaking measures to try to get a blueprint to create what we think this zoo looks like in the future, we still don't have resources and we can't just retain the same model of city ownership when the city really can't do anything. And one of the things, one of the critiques of the AZA was they want to see a sustainable funding source, a revenue source, going on into the future. And again, that doesn't need to happen overnight, but I think they would look very favorably on us aligning ourselves with Erie Events, being under an umbrella that has credibility, that has resources. And this is no small undertaking for Erie Events either. And as our staff and the Erie Events staff have been sharing information for the past several months, I mean, it's a big undertaking for them too. But we don't want to proceed any further or have our staff devote any more time and energy into this until we get a green light from the city. Because if this isn't a model that you're okay with, if there's, you know, any hesitancy that you don't want this to happen, then I don't know what's going to happen to the zoo, but we don't have another option other than Erie Events at the moment. As I said, the mayor's here. The administration can certainly speak for itself, but I've been led to believe they have a very favorable opinion of this new strategy. But again, we're here tonight. We want to be open, transparent. Whatever information you want, more in-depth financial analysis, or we're here to provide it to you. But we just don't want to proceed any further with the discussions with Erie. And there's still a lot of issues to work out. But we want to make sure that council is amenable to what we're strategizing. So with that, thank you.
With the $3 million being used from the state for the veterinarian clinic, is there any restrictions on that as far as being able to stack it with other sources or other state sources?
Well, just the restrictions that are inherent in a, in a RACP grant.
So it's RACP?
It's a RACP, yeah. You know, the match that we have, that we're scraping to have for that $3 million, we couldn't use that match to leverage another RACP for another project. And again, the other thing that I would highlight is, even though the local community over the years has been, you know, financially supportive of the zoo and, you know, we have a lot of fundraisers and end-of-year annual giving and Zoo Boo and those types of events, which bring in money and the community's supportive, but it's not big bucks. And for us to solicit major philanthrop, major donors in this community, either corporate or private, it's even more difficult now since we've lost our accreditation. Big check writers want to see that we have some stability and a plan for the future. So that's kind of inhibited our ability to fundraise independently for some of these bigger price tag projects. And again, you know, Erie Events would bring us that credibility and would make donors understand that we're aligned, we're proceeding together. That might give major check writers more confidence that the zoo has a future worth investing in.
Let me jump back to the $3 million. So I know you were drawn into the CRIS map that I saw a proposal of, and I know RACP can't be used in a CRIS zone.
Correct.
So is that going to be a different spot in the zoo?
Well, I'm not an expert on the CRIS, for sure. But my understanding is, is that if you have a RACP, you cannot get a CRIS in the same year. Not once the project has a RACP, they're forever banned from a CRIS. At least that's my understanding.
Yeah, I, I don't have a great understanding. I just know that, that's what I was specifically trying to get at without specifically asking.
You know, and, and the CRIS obviously gives Erie Events some financial stability, you know, a pot of money. It's not like they have money grown on trees either, even though, you know, they're very successful. There's some big price tag items, not just at the zoo, but other community assets that, you know, hopefully those CRIS monies are going to be used for. But at least it gives Erie Events some options that they don't have to fund all of this themselves. That was why it was important to get the zoo in the CRIS.
If I could, if I could kind of piggyback on that. So with RACP, there's the one-to-one match. While with CRIS, I believe it's a one-to-five match, so.
I'm confused. We're asking the Civic Center Authority, Erie Events, to come in and do what, for what? Their money to save the zoo? Is that what we're talking about?
We would come under their domain, just like the Sea Wolves, the Otters, the Warner, the Convention Center, that the zoo would be. You know, another asset, when the Convention Center Authority was created, it was for the purpose of alleviating the stress on city government that could not manage or have the financial resources for all of these assets that are in the city. This falls under that same umbrella. The zoo's another asset that the city really can't fund adequately.
I guess what I'm asking is...
And Erie Events could...
I, I was just, I apologize for being late. I was at another meeting. But the total nut to crack with that veterinary center, it's a lot of money. A lot more than you have saved up, I think.
But again, that's not going to happen all in one fell swoop or in one year. Like, our operating budget needs. If the AZA saw that we had a path forward to address them over a period of time, it doesn't have to happen in one year. The same as the investments in capital projects, that's not all going to happen in one year. So we would be part of the financial calculation as their, as Erie Events determines its capacity with all of its assets. You know, we would be part of that equation. But it's not like we're asking Erie Events to jump in with that lump sum of money in one fell swoop.
I'm not playing devil's advocate, I just, those questions, questions that I have on here. I am very well aware of the zoo. It's landlocked too, right? I mean, where, where can we expand the zoo? Seriously, where can we expand?
Well, we don't have anything written in stone, but when you look at that whole corner, the ice rink, J.C. Martin Golf Course. Now, obviously, everybody wants to keep the golf course the golf course. But if you repositioned a hole or two, and the, keep in mind, when the ice rink was built, it was for the purpose of generating funds for the operating budget of the zoo. That hasn't happened in years. It has become a money pit. It's not making money for us. Our staff is already underpaid and overworked, and they have to run an ice rink on top of it. And again, none of this is written in stone. It's just thoughts that, and conversations that are going on. But if you take that whole corner going into the future, you could enhance all of those assets. The same as J.C. Martin. Coming under the umbrella of Erie Events is more beneficial for the golf course than having the zoo or having the city that can't financially support it.
They have to, they, they're on the laser on there. They're in the black.
For the first time ever, depending on how you look at it. But anyway, but that's why it's important to have the whole foot, the whole, the whole corner, because it gives you much more...
Just trying to fill in the blanks here.
Yeah, it gives you much more options going into the future. Again, all of them are undetermined, but at least, you know, the same as like the Bayfront. Nobody knew exactly how that was going to pan out when it came under the Convention Center Authority, but look at how well that's turned out. But they need the opportunity to be able to strategize all that acreage, not just a limited part of it.
And if we talk about the northern section of the zoo, so we had it in our master plan to expand forward. So we have, there was a verbal agreement that we have right of first refusal to the Marsh Street property. And so, when the components that are going to be moving from Marsh Street move into the new building, we would potentially have access to that space, which there then would create a space for us to move parking underneath or across 38th Street, and then expand the zoo forward into what is our parking lot now. So that is a very viable option for us that could add acres to the zoo in a fairly short amount of time.
Want us as the city to give you that property or where you can find the money to buy it from us?
That's up for discussion.
Just playing money pit, that's all. I mean, I think it's a great idea, and I...
Well, there's a lot of variables involved with that Marsh Street property, like when and if it's ever going to become available, what the price tag would be, what the zoo's needs are at the time that that property might be available, what the financial situation looks like. I mean, all of those are unknowns.
Kind of like the ghosty Christmas future, huh? Very mercurial.
As someone who, not that long ago, I remember going to...
As someone who, not that long ago, I remember going to the zoo and being able to see the giraffes, and I recall us having elephants once upon a time. Is that true? Okay, yeah. And I know that, that was something that my family did regularly, was we went to the zoo. And I never really thought about it, that our city is very particular to have a zoo because of, you know, how big we are and the footprint in which people come to our zoo and the footprint that we have tourist-wise. So when it was brought to my attention that we did lose the accreditation, I guess my heart was broken a little bit because I was thinking to myself, how does that affect the bottom line and the future of the zoo, something that a lot of families now take their kids to. That's something that my family does. They take their kids to. But when you have a city who's not able to fulfill our end of the needs, it's kind of at the expense of the community and at the expense of the ability for us to be able to make sure that there is a zoo 20 years down the line. So I was in favor of us having this study session so that everyone on council could hear where we are as far as our asset, because the zoo is an asset, and where we are funding-wise. And every person deserves to make a family sustainable wage. So go ahead and make sure that you're paying your workers because they hold it up when no one else is there. And our animals are well taken care of because of those keepers and that staff. So that's awesome. I know that nobody really wants to talk about the need for wages to be increased, but that is a need that if our workers are able to afford to live, they're able to afford to bring their family to the zoo. So then it's like a never-ending cycle of coming back into our community, the dollar. So I just know that we never really want to lose anything, but if this means that we can gain so much more, and we're not really losing it, it's just being moved over to another entity, then we should listen to all of the data and all of the information, especially due to the fact that we just cannot help the zoo right now. And I don't think the city's ever going to be in a position that we can. Maybe in 20 years, we don't know, but we can hope for tomorrow. But I do know that this is needed, and I do know that there's a lot of people who are hoping that we can get the accreditation back. And in order to do that, we need a veterinarian hospital clinic so that each animal can be specialized and have a specialty room, I guess, is how you would label that out to be. So I'm not sure where we're going to end up in this conversation, but I did want to comment on the fact that a lot of the young people in our community remember us having elephants and giraffes. And if we can get back to that point, I think that would be like full circle for us. So I want to have the conversations to be able to get us in that direction, not just lose the zoo completely. That's something that I don't want to think that we allow to happen. So I think we fully need to make sure that we're getting all of the information and doing all the work.
We do have a ARP bucket for Parks and Recreation. Originally had, what, six million in it?
Five.
Five, six, yeah.
But I do know that the Parks and Recreation money is going to be used for their plan to be able to do matching grants for hopefully more future funds. So I don't want to try to pull money from something that I've been, for the last three years, talking about how important the park and recreational spaces in our community is.
Plus, a one-time injection of capital isn't going to solve the problem.
Right.
It needs to be a sustainable source of revenue. And also keeping in mind, you know, we can't raise membership fees. When you look at the demographics of the community, the average household incomes, you know, our membership fees aren't completely elastic. We, you know, there is an upper limit. Otherwise, we're going to outprice families from being able to come. So, I mean, we have, you know, went, we've been knocking our heads together for a while about how do we generate more revenue? How do we find sustainable revenue and capital? So, I mean, I appreciate that there might be pots of money laying around, but a one-time injection of capital isn't going to solve our problems.
I was talking about the vet center, the one-time help there.
Oh, oh, well, we would take that. We would talk about that.
I can't remember, when did we lose our accreditation? Nineteen?
Twenty-one.
In twenty-one.
Twenty-one. Pittsburgh just got theirs back. That was, that was big news. And they, but they didn't have it, we lost ours, they didn't have theirs even then. So, I mean, is this, is this something, you know, I'm hearing a couple of different things. The state's now investing more in it, Pittsburgh gets theirs back, I presume with some more state investment. No?
Pittsburgh has the luxury, they have a RAD tax. So they have a sustainable revenue source, and their loss of accreditation really had nothing to do with the financial issues that we face. It had to do with different philosophies of care for animals, particularly elephants. So it's kind of apples and oranges, but the finances of the Pittsburgh Zoo had nothing to do with losing their accreditation because they have, you know, a percentage of a RAD tax.
Yeah, okay.
They were listed on the, on the graph also, so they receive, I believe it's 20%. And they stepped away from AZA because they prefer to take care of elephants in non-protected contact. And AZA is very much about, when you work with elephants, you work with them in protected contact, meaning there is a barrier between you and them. So it was a philosophy, and Pittsburgh stepped away.
So a couple of other trains of thoughts, and I'm sorry, I'm being Kathy Ben, like going through some, like, just like looking at the numbers, like, big picture. So our budget annually is somewhere around 170 million, somewhere in that 160, I think, is what I just pulled up real quick. We're looking at, in the black for the first time with some of the golf courses, around, what, like 100,000, I think is that range somewhere there? So in, in the grand scheme, very small, there was a deferred maintenance issue that just came up that cost the city 40,000. And it should have been way bigger, but you guys just so happened to have machinery there fixing other things. It would have completely wiped out any of the, in the black zone that we would have been with. And that was one issue. And we're talking about decades of deferred maintenance. We don't know what else is going to happen. And, and just when one more thing happens, any, any revenue we're making off of, of the golf, it's, it's off the table. It's, it's washed underneath, right? And so when we're talking about how much we're actually bringing in versus what, what the entire budget is, it's just, it's a fraction. But when we talk about 21.2 million annually that the zoo is helping create for the community, even if, even if that is, even if that is bigger than, you know, what it, what it really is, I just, I don't want us as a council to be really short-sighted around what we would be trading for, a little bit for the golf course, but what we would be taking away from the community annually, like millions, literally millions of dollars in jobs, and, and just the loss. And you, and the other thing that the zoo is able to do, and I know this has just, just happened, you just saved a small business. And I don't think that that got enough attention that it did. Like, Andorra's Bubble Tea, whom I love dearly, would have had to completely close their doors had the zoo not had a spot to kind of offer. So it's not just, just this, but there are other avenues that are supporting, you know, people who are coming in to get, to get those, you know, entry-level jobs, but then small businesses where they can kind of launch, things that you're just scratching the surface of. I guess my challenge is, is to all of us, is to just like, let's, I want us to think really big picture and to, for us not to get, to not be the council that made the zoo crumble. Please don't do that.
I mean, is the golf course figure a combined of Downing and J.C. Martin, or is that, you know it separately for each location? Combines.
Combined?
Yeah.
Different people are operating them?
No, I mean, with the revenue, with the being in the black.
You have the budget.
Both right. By themselves, but they put them together.
So J.C.'s, J.C.'s make a money by itself.
Yeah.
And when you think about the veterinary clinic, when we're talking about, when you said they have to be separate, so are other local vets allowed to come in for some of these scans? Would they be allowed to do that or not allowed to do?
That is a really great point. The idea behind the veterinary center is that, yes, they would be able to come in, we would be able to offer high imaging, high-level imaging to local veterinarians. We noticed, as we were developing this vet center and thinking about what we needed to do, we knew that there was a need within the community for the community to have access to high-level imaging, like a CT scan or an MRI. If you have a pet and something happens and you need to take your pet somewhere, you were traveling to Akron or Pittsburgh to have that work done. So to create a model that we can provide those services here, and when we talk about those additional positions, two of those positions would be a full-time veterinarian to man that component of that, the public-facing veterinary center, along with a vet tech. And if you think about the amount of money that would be staying within Erie, the people that would not have to travel, they would not have to take a hotel, all of that money would stay within Erie, and we would continue to generate, to generate revenue. So it really is a great opportunity, not only for us, but for the community.
And we've had some preliminary conversations with our AZA mentor, asking whether there are models that we would be permitted to do this, and he said, absolutely. And we've also tried to, we've started to reach out to the local veterinary doctor network to see, you know, if we build it, will you come? And, you know, so far, it's been very positive.
We've reached out a few to the animal rescue places, and this would have been, this is a game changer for, for them, just the, I mean, as nonprofits who have to go and send staff that they, and all that extra overtime or mileage. And so this is, that's why I brought it up, is because it's, it's yet another way that it's bringing money back to Erie by supporting a ton of the local businesses and stuff.
Yeah, it's not a done deal, but that's what we're working towards.
The vision of, yeah. Thank you.
How much is a membership at this time? And do you also get to go to the other zoos like you used to be able to, like Columbus and Buffalo, for free?
Yes. So family membership is right around $100. It is very reasonably priced. And yes, you are able to use it at reciprocating zoos. I will say that when we regain accreditation, that opens up more opportunity because certain AZA zoos will only reciprocate with AZA zoos. So we do have a reciprocal list. It's not as robust as it used to be, but that is something that we are definitely working back towards.
Thank you.
I'm sure there'll be a lot more questions, but thank you all for your interest.
Yeah, thank you for the information. I guess I just have one last question was, are we going to need to have a presentation with the Erie Events?
Well, Erie Events is, I mentioned, they're here.
Okay.
And I...
But I just, as far as what are they going to be doing for you? They're just going to take over the zoo's financial, what, like, I guess that's something council would need is, like, need to know, is how would the Erie Zoo be in your partnership? Because, right, they have the capital right now, they've done great work with the Warner, the Sea Wolves, so we would hope that they're able to accomplish that with you as well. And you guys have already had these conversations.
These are clients right here.
Yes.
Hi, I'm Gus Bynum, Executive Director. We've put together a statement from our, from our board, which might be helpful, but essentially what, as Jane was saying, what needs to happen, the entity is, it's a city-run entity. So before we, we've had conversations for a year now. They've been very informal, they've just been discussions. We've been trying to learn more about the zoo and some of the challenges, some of the things that you see up here. Where we're at at this point is if we're going to have any other discussions, those discussions are going to need to be considered by the city. It's a city entity, so the transfers, also, as Jane had alluded to, we need to know from council that we need to move to that next step to start putting some more staff time into figuring out where we're at and where we need to go. Because we need to really do a forensic analysis of this. We need to analyze what we can handle as an organization, what's needed to, obviously we, as was said, we run facilities, and our expectations of running those facilities is very high, as is the communities. So if we folded this into our organization, we would want, want that same thing. So we really need to understand the landscape before this. Is there enough copies there for everybody?
Yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you. I just wanted to know, you know, what was Erie Events', you know, response to everything that's developing? So I appreciate you having this and giving it to council. I don't think anybody else has anything else to ask at the moment. I think we're going to take everything that you guys presented with us and, you know, probably consult among each other at the next caucus. I'm going to have conversations with Tyler and the solicitors to see if this was a viable thing, what would the city be giving out, well, giving away, but not necessarily giving away, but losing, but then benefiting. I don't know. It's, it's like, it's awkward on how you break it down, but either way, the community needs to benefit from us getting our accreditation and making sure our zoo's here in 20 years. So I think a lot of council members have to do a little bit of homework to figure out how we feel about this. But I thank you for your time.
I'm just curious, so the extent, would, would you be comfortable sharing with the administration just like kind of your initial thoughts?
Absolutely, yes. We'll definitely talk about this more and decide, what should we do, what's the right thing to do? Absolutely. Because we're very interested in this as well.
Okay, that sounds good. Because if the mayor's administration's on board, then hopefully we can all come to a consensus that works for the community. All right, that's good. All right, thank you, Mayor.
Well, and please reach out at any point to Jeff, Rue, or myself, you know, or Gus, with any questions that you have, any follow-up information. Again, you know, a lot of the details still need to be worked out, but we just didn't want to go any further without at least having some sense that council and the administration are favorably disposed.
Well, you brought us the idea. So now we have to see what we do with this idea. So I appreciate you wanting this meeting, and I appreciate everybody who's here today so that we could hear about everything on these findings. And I know that the zoo is very near and dear to everyone's heart, so this is something that's really important to all of us, and especially you live here in the city. And if you're, have people, family who come back just to do these attractions, it's definitely something that we have to make sure that we have here for when they do come back. So I thank everyone for their evening, and that will conclude...
I have a question.
Go ahead.
What is your timeline as far as, when do you want us to know? And do we have to make up like a resolution with the solicitor's office?
You know, I would counsel you to deal with your solicitor on, you know, what that legal process consists of. Obviously, we would like this done sooner than later, both for Erie Events and for the zoo, so that we're not kind of in limbo. And the sooner it gets done, the quicker we can approach our accreditation peeps.
Yeah, I don't know what the next step is, but I think we should get, be much more definitive as far as what you expect from Erie Events. It's going to cost them money to do this.
Yep.
And I'm sure that they'll be profitable because they have been in everything they've done so far. I just want to make sure that T's are crossed and the I's are dotted.
Yeah, as do we all. And, you know, as I said before, we don't want to see Erie Events getting over their head either, and they need to come up with their own financial scheme as to what they can do when, and then mirror it with what we need to have done when. So...
You folks are still meeting regularly, right?
Mm-hmm.
Chris, did you want to comment something?
I could add a quick point if I could. So I'm just going to go there. Number one was identifying predictable, reliable revenue streams, right? And that's why we're here tonight, is because I think there's a vehicle for that. Number two, what does that potential handoff look like between the city and Erie Events? And what are you all comfortable with? And I think we need to have a follow-up conversation internally, but also being open to the idea that we need to look for ways that are sustainable long-term. So I think the answer is, the next step is internally deciding what and if and what are we comfortable with, and then engaging with the solicitor's office and exchanging, you know, draft MOUs, what might this look like? What, what, you know, we exchange ideas, see if we can move it forward, because we all agree that we need to do something. So, you know, maybe that's a follow-up conversation internally, which I think would be the next step.
And time is of the essence.
Right. So not next, not next month. You're right. Within the next week or two.
Okay.
I definitely will keep the conversation going, especially with Tyler and with the solicitors, just so that we can touch base on what the mayor and his administration is, is, is planning to do with this new information. But also just to keep everyone on council informed, because like I said, each council member cares about the zoo in different ways. So I think the longevity is important for us, so we're going to definitely have some hard conversations over the next couple of days and see where everybody ends up. So thank you so much for coming tonight, and this concludes our study session on the zoo. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for having us.
Thank you.